Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Enfield Town Council. It's Wednesday, May 16, 2012. And can we start with roll call, please?
Councilman Ononey.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Crowley.
Here.
Councilman Edgar.
Here.
Councilman Hall.
Here.
Mayor Colvin.
Here.
Councilman Kinsler.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
There's 11 members present and our absent.
Okay, first item on our agenda, this is our budget adoption meeting. The introduction of the main motion. And it's the one that starts resolved at page 25, correct? So what I'm gonna do, just as the ground rules for everyone, I'll read the main motions. And then when we get into each amendment, we'll rotate, we'll start with Councilman Bosco making the motion with the second, with Councilman Stokes, and as we've normally done, we'll go down and just circle through. And so we'll put the main motion out there with a motion to approve and a second, and then we open it up for the amendments. Once we go through all of the amendments, then we have the other resolutions in your packet which would then follow after the amendments have been approved. So the main motion is resolved at page 25, General Fund Revenue Summary, and page 31, Summary of Expenditures of the Town Budget as submitted by the Town Manager and the estimates for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013, including estimates of receipts and expenditures and recommendations of said town of Enfield, for emergency medical services pages 109 and 110 through 113, Water Pollution Control Fund pages 117 and pages 118 through 120, Social Services Fund pages 125 and 131, Dog Fund pages 157 through 158, Information Technology Fund pages 163 through 166, Recreation Fund pages 171, 172, 174, 176, 178, 179, Insurance Fund pages 183 through 189, and Capital Improvement Funds pages 193 to 195. Be accepted, approved, and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Enfield. Be it further resolved that any and all monies deemed by the Enfield Director of Finance saved by the Enfield Board of Education unspent and unencumbered in its fiscal year 2012 general fund allotment be appropriated to the Information Technology Fund at the date of earliest action by the Enfield Town Council in order to offset the required fiscal year 2013 Enfield Board of Education's contribution.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Crowley. And now we would move to the prepared amendments. And there's discussion allowed during any amendment, and if folks want to offer up amendments to the amendments, that's allowed as well, just under the rules of, or under Robert's Rules of Order. So if Councilman Bosco, if you can begin with Amendment 1, and we'll follow through.
Right. Amendment 1, To amend a manager's proposed budget for 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 32 in accordance with the following schedule: Town Council, travel from $10,385 to $5,385.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second discussion. Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any one opposed? Any abstentions? 10 to 1. Passes. Councilman Stokes?
Okay, Amendment Number 2, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 35 in accordance with the following schedule: Town Attorney, legal fees from $90,000 to $70,000.
Motion and seconded, discussion. Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Amendment Number 3, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-13 budget as shown on page 48 in accordance with the following schedule: From the Treasury, health insurance from $94,140 reduced to $73,448.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion on Amendment 3? By show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Councilman Kinsler?
Amendment to the... Thank you. Amendment to the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 54 in accordance with the following schedule: Public Safety Administration stipend from $0 to $2,488.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Councilman Hall?
Just a quick question, Matt. Through Scott to Matt, I don't recall what this was for.
This is the Director of Public Safety stipend, the cafeteria benefit that non-union individuals get. We didn't, we hadn't caught it and put it in the budget.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition. Councilman Hall?
Amendment 5, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 56 in accordance with the following schedule: Public Safety, Police Services, Salaries, Furniture, and Fixtures from $6,894,183 to $6,839,521. Furniture and Fixtures, $5,002,0.
Second. Discussion. Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Amendment Number 6, Motion to amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 59 in accordance with the following schedule: Public Safety, Communications, Salaries from $749,12 to $750,308. Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? In favor? Unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the Town Manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 63 in accordance with the following schedule: Public Works, Administration, Health Insurance from $107,537 to $95,098.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Amendment Number 8, I'd like to make the motion to amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 65 in accordance with the following schedule: Public Works, Buildings and Grounds, Salaries, Social Security, Medicare, Health Insurance from $1,124,017 to $1,114,317, $77,131 to $76,531, $18,038 to $17,938, $386,040 to $378,735.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Opposed. One in opposition.
I'd like to present the amendment, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 100 in accordance with the following schedule: Non-Town Agencies, Capital Region Council of Governments, $27,453 to $29,402, and Celebrations and Special Events to $63,550 to $58,550.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
To amend the Town Manager's proposed budget to 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 101 in accordance with the following schedule: Boards and Commissions, Community Emergency Response Team, from $3,000 to $20,000.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Eight to three.
Amendment Number 11, To amend the manager's increased 2012-2013 budget as shown on page 104 in accordance with the following schedule: Transfers out and contingency, $1,169,398 to 0. Transfers to capital, $1,799,446 to $1,757,006.1. Transfers to social services, $1,838,516 to $1,828,660. Transfers to EMS, $751,962 to $731,962.
Joe?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Councilman Hall?
I'd like to make an amendment to the $106,433 to be amended to go into the IT budget for the Board of Ed, towards the Board of Ed's IT bill. Instead of, from the general fund contribution.
Okay, so this is a motion to amend the amendment. Motion by Councilman Hall, is there a second? By Councilman Kinsler. And this is to add to the amendment a transfer to IT for Board of Education from 0 to $106,433.
And just a point of clarification, I'd like to see that amended only because it keeps our MBR where it is, it doesn't increase the MBR, and this would be, I thought that's where we were the other night, so maybe I misunderstood, but that's where I'd like to see it go without affecting our MBR. So that's why I offered the amendment.
Okay, this is discussion on the amendment to the amendment. Discussion. Councilman Lee?
Could you clarify the "from" and "to"? Where is that, $106,000 at the moment?
Well, right now, you would have to go forward a few amendments where you'll see the council would have to amend my appropriation number for the Board of Education by 106. So I think if you go to Amendment Number 13, right now, that one is where that 106 that council decided to move to the Board of Education from Monday's meeting. So if this is amendment, the amendment's approved, there's a series of changes to the amendments that are coming up that I have with me if you so desire.
That you'll kick in automatically.
Yeah, that you have to make these changes as well reflective of that.
Yeah, and this was, Councilman Hall had contacted both Matt and I this morning, indicating that she would be making this amendment. So we had Matt, you know, prepare for it, and if it passes, they know what the impact will be on subsequent amendments. So it was just, so that's, so it comes from that allocation by consensus from Thursday night of an additional allocation to the Board of Ed.
So transfers, transfers out and contingency, so the transfers to IT, the "from" figure stays the same, and the "to" figure gets increased by $106,000 and change?
Well, what we did in...
It's actually a separate line.
Yeah.
So it's called Transfers to IT for BOE. And it's from 0 to 106,433. Councilman Kinsler?
In this, just to clarify, after deliberations the other night, when the consensus was reached, it was understood by several of us that that's how it would be, and it turned out that that, we neglected to actually address that number for that purpose officially. So it's just a matter of moving the 106 that's going there anyway from general fund contribution to an IT contribution, like the other things that we had done and that we had talked about. So it's not really, it's just clarifying and putting it in its proper place, we feel.
Councilman Mangini?
Perhaps I was at a different meeting than Councilman Kinsler, but I did not understand the dollars in that order. My paperwork prepared by Town Manager for that evening clearly shows additional council appropriation to the Board of Ed budget summary of 106,433, and in fact, what our Town Manager has previously stated in the resolution that he had prepared and given us ahead of time shows the budget adopted by the council, the amount of $63,247,789. And by changing the numbers to reflect this transfer, again, our Town Manager respectfully would have to go through and change all the numbers. And I fear by doing that, we're going to actually deplete, rather than add, to the Board of Ed budget, the appropriation that we had all agreed upon that evening. So I would respectfully decline that. Thank you.
Councilman Kinsler?
Yeah, it's, the proclamation you have in front of you was made the day after the meeting, and that's why this was brought to our attention, because it wasn't in there to go to IT on the proclamation. So we are addressing it now. The money, the 106 that was agreed to move by everyone in that room that voted for that is still moving there. It's just going to the IT account like the other things we had agreed to previously, as opposed to coming out of the general fund. There is no difference in dollars, it's just where it's, where it's gonna go and what line item, that's all.
Further discussion? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
I believe I understand the rationale behind this is the fact that we're trying to keep the MBR down due to the consolidation of the high schools. We're looking that their budget will be less after the consolidation of the high school, and with the state mandate that we can't reduce MBR, the reason for moving it to IT still gives the Board of Ed, actually in this budget, over $1 million extra money. It's not gonna show it as an increase in their budget, but they're actually getting that. And this 106 is from the Town Council, an appropriation to them, but it would go through the IT line instead of increasing the MBR. So next year, we don't have to worry about it, or the year the high schools merge. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment? So I just, I have one question for the makers of the amendment. Does this, does this amendment solidify your vote in favor of the budget overall? Because I want to understand that, as we discussed last night. I want to understand your position before I make a decision on the amendment or not.
It would for me.
Okay.
I responded, I said it would for me.
Okay. Any further comment? Then we need, by a show of hands, those that are in favor of the amendment.
To the amendment or the amendment?
To the amendment, to the amendment. To the... Okay? One, two, three, four, five.
Six.
No. One, two, three, four...
Five. Six.
Five, six, I'm sorry.
Amendment passes.
Those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed. So Amendment 11 passes, or the amendment to the amendment passes. Now, any further discussion on amendment?
Someone has a question for you.
Edgar, Nelson, Hall, Kinsler, Lee, and Bosco. So we're still on Amendment 11 as amended.
Motion to approve as amended? Is that how that would go? The whole amendment?
Well, it's just further discussion on the amendment, on the amendment as amended. Then, by a show of hands, those in favor of Amendment Number 11 as amended. By a show of hands. One, two, three, four, five. The one that was just amended. Six in favor. Those opposed? Five. So it is amended and passed. So now, Matt, I ask you to hand out...
That does have, that does then change Amendment 12. Amendment 13 that's on your list is no longer necessary, and then later on, Amendment 22 will change. And so all that's covered on the sheet that's being handed out now, as well as later on, when we do the resolution on the ECS block grant, that will have to be amended as well with the new number, which I have a replacement resolution as well.
2022 is on there.
So Amendment 12, which is, needs to be read by Councilman Bosco off of the new sheet. Yes?
Amendment 12, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget by decreasing total town appropriations as shown on page 31, from $52,466,888 to $51,213,917.
Second. Okay, motion and seconded, discussion? Any discussion? Okay, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One opposed, sorry. Cindy.
So I would skip Number 13, then?
Yes.
Okay. Amendment 14, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget by decreasing the entire budget appropriation as shown on page 31, from $115,608,244 to $114,355,273.
Second. Motioned and seconded, discussion? Any discussion? By a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition.
Amendment Number 15, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-13 budget as shown on pages 26 and 27 in accordance with the following schedules: General Fund Revenues, New Revenue Sources from $578,573 reduced to $300,000. Medicaid from $0 increased to $125,000. Miscellaneous Revenue from $0 increased to $70,000. And Appropriated Fund Balance from $1,600,000 reduced to $430,602.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Amendment 16, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget by decreasing the revenue appropriation as shown on pages 26 through 27, from $115,608,244 to $114,355,273.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition.
Amendment 17, To amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 budget as shown on pages 145 and 154 in accordance with the following summary of changes with the related revenue impacts, related with the revenue impacts: Youth Services, Salaries from $152,832 to Other Professional Services from $20,510 to $52,510. Outside Agencies, Unallocated Boards from $67,237 to $36,248.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition. I'd like to make a motion to amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 Social Services Revenue Budget as shown on pages 127 through 128 in accordance with the following schedule: Administration, General Fund Transfers in from $225,495 to $216,495. Sales Advertising from 0 to 9,000. Under Youth Services, General Fund Transfers in from $393,059 to $423,192. And Outside Agencies, General Fund Transfers in from $126,390 to $95,401. So moved. Second. Take your second.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Lee.
I just want to pass along that I actually had an opportunity to speak to one of the vendors that's been approved by the Greater Hartford Transit District for their advertising services initiative, and I'll be passing that along to the town manager tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lee. Any further discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the town manager's budget, to amend the town manager's proposed 2012-2013 EMS budget shown on page 110 in accordance with the following schedule. Emergency medical services overtime from $187,611 to $167,611.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on amendment? Any discussion sensing none? Show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Amendment number 20, I'd like a motion to amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 EMS revenue budget as shown on page 109 in accordance with the following schedule. Revenue, general fund transfers in from $751,962 to $731,962.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 information technology fund budget as shown on page 164 in accordance with the following schedule. Information technology salaries, $1,63,458,000 to $972,452. Health insurance from $248,876 to $233,876. Technological services, $1,075,151 to $991,241. Technological equipment, $1,050,996 to $921,775.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Through the merit to the town manager. Matt, is this one of the employee unions that actually gave concessions on their own?
Yes.
Yes. And there's two positions that are being eliminated here?
Yes, one July 1st, one January 1st.
Okay, so if you approve this amendment, we're basically terminating two positions in the town of Enfield.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Councilman Mangini.
And for that very reason, I'm not supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? By a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? I got four in opposition. Correct? I have Bosco, Nelson, Mangini, and Arnoni. So that amendment passes seven to four. On the new page.
Motion to amend the town manager's proposed 2012-2013 information technologies revenue budget as shown on page 163 in accordance with the following schedule. General fund transfers, $1,799,446 to $1,757,061.
Hey, Tom, actually it's on the sheet that was handed out. That's the re, correct?
I got 22.
Yep.
So to amend the town manager's proposed 2012-2013 information technology revenue budget as shown on page 163 in accordance with the following schedule. General fund transfers, $1,799,446 to $1,863,494. Intergovernmental transfers, BOE, $2,012,301 to $1,629,116.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been.
Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Could you just explain?
These are the adjustments that were made by, in the IT department and its impact on the Board of Ed's need to fund the IT fund as well. So with the eliminations of positions and equipment, this is the offsetting on the board side of their commitment to IT. Correct, Matt? Yes?
Absolutely.
Further discussion. Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition.
Amendment number 23, to amend the manager's proposed 2012-2013 CIP budget as shown on pages 194 to 195 in accordance with the following schedule. Public safety from $220,002.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Councilman Mangini.
Just for clarification, this 220 would be the vehicles, correct, that we already transferred?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Amendment 24. To amend the town manager's proposed 2012-2013 CIP revenue budget as shown on pages 193 in accordance with the following schedule. General fund transfer in from $1,169,398 to 0. Project refunding, $1,224,73 to $2,169,871.
Second. Motioned and seconded. Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition.
All right. Amendment number 25, to identify projects refunding source in the amount of $2,169,871 from the closeout of CIP projects to be allocated in accordance with amendments 23 and 24 above in the CIP schedules on page 193 through 195 of the proposed budget. Projects closed are 8123, science laboratory improvements, $235,000. 8128, Jablonsky expansion improvements, $251,935. 8163, DPW truck wash, $221,816. 8137, schools electric switchgear, $450,000. 8704, school heating system, $646. Roads 2005, $390,674 with a total of $2,169,871.
Second. You had a smile on your face. Oh, great. Motion made and seconded. Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Just to clarify, most of these projects here, if the school referendum passes, a lot of these repairs were to Enfield High School that will be taken care of in the referendum.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, people also got to realize here's some solid numbers too that the referendum part of that price tag covers here, and well over a million and a half dollars here, so, thank you.
Further discussion. Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One in opposition. Okay. That completes the prepared amendments. Are there any other amendments? So what we have to do is we have to go back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Deputy Mayor Nelson.
I just want to state the reason why I will not be supporting this due to the fact that we are laying off town employees to move money over to the Board of Ed's side. The Board of Ed is supposed to, with the school consolidation, the high schools being consolidated and stuff like that, they're supposed to be lowering their budget. And if it weren't for a last ditch effort by Councilman Hall, their budget would have shown an increase and the MBR would go up. And the state of Connecticut's made it very clear, you cannot reduce that MBR unless you follow certain formulas. Therefore, I believe the schools are in the right direction and they should be lowering their budget, and I still haven't come to the, well, I still don't understand how they need more money when it's supposed to be costing them less to run. So I cannot support this budget, and I just wanted to explain why. Thank you.
Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Just for clarification, we're voting on the Board of Ed budget separately from the town budget, is that correct? Or is the whole budget wrapped up?
No, you're voting on the whole budget, which includes the appropriation to the Board of Education.
I'm going to support the entire budget, but I do have some reservations with regards to the budget deliberations specifically. Some of the reductions are going to result in layoffs, and I'm totally opposed to laying people off. I think it's unfortunate that that's been introduced, you know, as far as the Councilman Hall last ditch effort. I think, you know, by looking at the numbers, the Board of Ed is still going to have $382,000 plus gap in what is required to fund education. I think it's unfortunate, to say the least, that we're not going forward and giving our all to fund and support education. But having said that, I don't want to throw the bathwater out with the baby or vice versa. So I'm going to support the budget, knowing that we're going to be giving something is better than nothing, because going back to the town manager's budget would be probably worse. So I will support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilman Kensler.
Yeah, I too am not going to be supporting the entire budget, although it was very close and there was a lot of goodwill on all the folks at this table to try to come to an agreement. It was very, the numbers were very close, I just in good conscience couldn't do it, as everyone else on this table is doing what they believe is right. I will say that the Board of Ed is going to get somewhere in the vicinity of $1.2 million more than it spent last year. So no one should walk away with this with the feeling that education is not being funded. It was a priority, it was really a matter of how and how much. I appreciated the Board of Ed finally coming back with some savings. They cut their request, so to speak, down by almost $400,000 with some monies they found after digging hard, and it was a good effort. We, as you saw today on the town side, had to make some hard choices, but to Deputy Mayor Nelson's point, you can only cut so much out of the town side before there's absolutely nothing left to cut. So we had to end it, that's where I ended it. It was very close, and that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Bosco.
I too will be voting against it. I don't think this budget does enough here to shore up fund balance. I also feel that the Board of Ed found a million dollars of money they did not spend. So if they re-appropriated that money for next year, they're not going to spend another million dollars next year. So with their excess costs, they could fare out pretty well. They're going to have commitments that they have, obligations they have to do, they're contractual, but we also gave them another $480,000. Money not spent is money earned, and they'll have extra when they're done, when they, when they go look in their budget even more. And I can't support it. We're not doing enough for fund balance, and I don't think it's responsible. Thank you.
Councilman Crowley.
Thanks, and I just want to say thanks to all the councilmen up here and staff. I know you guys worked since last November to put this together, and we appreciate the hard work that was put into it. Guys, I know we had some tough deliberations, and I will be supporting the entire budget. And just for clarification, Councilman Hall, I understand your amendment, I thought it was a good amendment, it doesn't reduce anything to the Board of Ed, it just reduces, so I understand it completely. It doesn't give any less than what we planned the other night when we left the building, so I applaud you for that, it was a nice job. The Board of Ed, the Board of Ed increase wasn't based, at least as far as I could tell through all our deliberations, wasn't based on someone losing their job. I believe the IT department had scheduled planned reductions in the staffing of IT when this was formed, when the IT department was formed. The purpose was to eventually we start reducing it down, and I think that's the way I understood it at least, and that's why I supported that part of it. The MBR will not be affected for next year, which is something that I know some of my colleagues really felt strongly about, so they did get that. In all in all, I think, you know, as painstakingly as it is, there's things that I wanted to increase, I didn't get increased, and things that other people want to have increased that didn't get increased. But again, it's, you know, we have a tough job to do, and there's no, there's no yes or no answers. There's never a good year to say there's going to be a tax increase, there's never, you know, there's always a good year to say no. But unfortunately, sometimes there's things that we have to do. So I will be supporting the budget, and again, I want to thank the entire council, whether or not we agreed or disagreed on any amendment or any different policy that we set or vote that we took. I know everyone takes it to heart, and everyone works hard at it and thinks very long and hard over the decision, so I just want to say thank you.
Councilman Arnoni.
Yeah, I'd like to also say what Pat had said about the layoffs in IT. I'm not in favor of laying off anyone, but they were hooked into something totally different than the school budget, and I just want to make sure that's clear. I think we put a little back into the fund balance, we're able to keep the tax increase at its below a percent. And everybody, as a newbie here, I had a lot of nights here away from my family and with you guys, and I know it was difficult for all of us, and I thank you for treating us all like equals when we are deliberating, which is an important thing, so I will support this. Thank you.
Further discussion. Councilman Hall.
I actually came in here tonight to vote no on this budget, and I think some of the reasons are valid to point out, because the numbers don't change. I'm going to support the budget because the amendment that was supported tonight, for me, it did make a difference, because we spent a lot of time deliberating. That 106,000 to me was a tough sacrifice, because there were other sacrifices that I think a lot of us made, and it was a difficult decision. But to me, not increasing the MBR helped. So to me, that really made a difference, and I appreciate the support on that. What I think is important to point out is that in this budget, we decreased the town side of the budget by 2.55%. So on this side of the House, we took a huge hit. And to Ken's point, we can't keep doing that. It's unfair, it can't go on, in my opinion. The Board of Ed's increase was 1.86. I agree with the point Ken made, and I think Tom made it as well. We've got to be fair, and the sacrifices have to be shared. And I think we're going in that right direction with the Board of Ed. I think we've made a huge, huge steps forward. I think there's a lot of movement to go. So that's an important point. The other point I want to make, that I always hear from people, is that the Board has laid off a ton of people. These are numbers that came from the Board of Ed to our town manager's office. In 2007, the Board of Ed had 840 employees. Today, they have 810 employees. That's after the town took over 56 of their employees from 2007. So that leaves the Board of Ed with a surplus of 26 bodies since 2007. So I thought that was an important point to make, because there haven't. So I, I thought that was an important point to make because there haven't been tons of layoffs. We've closed two schools in order to make the class sizes smaller. So there's, there's some good reasons, but there's got to be movement here at some point. We're looking for the town to support 30 million dollars in town money for school renovation and I think they expect some savings there with the, the combining of the high schools. I think if we don't give them any savings there, we're not really giving them a reason to support the referendum. I think it's important to note that there's got to be some give and take and I think the town has given and given and the Board of Ed can give a little more. I'm going to support the budget. It was a horrible budget for me. I have never walked into this council chamber ready to vote no on a budget in eight years. So for me, this was a tough one. I'm going to support it. It's not a budget I like, it's not a budget I'm happy with, but I'm going to support it. I hope next year we can do better. I really, truly do. That's all I have.
Thanks, Carol. Further discussion? Councilman Edgar.
I'd like to say that I came in here tonight completely undecided whether I was going to go for or against the vote. The motion that was made by Councilman Hall on 106,433 for the MBR has changed my, has, has made my opinion. I will support it now.
Thank you, Red. Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Just one more thing. Matt, this budget does include a tax increase to the residents, right? Commercial property?
Yeah, the mill rate is going up by .9.
I, I understand that. Above and beyond the revaluation, because that can get lost.
Right, if, yeah, those that didn't, didn't decrease as much as the average would see an increase above that, yeah.
So I just, I just want to be clear, those of us who run that we don't believe in tax increases, you're perfectly clear and understand you're raising the people's taxes and they can't afford it right now. I just want to be clear. Thank you.
Further discussion? I just have a couple of comments. Overall, I'll, I'll support the budget. There are challenges that we faced going into the budget process. If you remember back to day one of deliberations, we had a half a million dollars to 600,000 dollar funding hole that faced us from anticipated revenue from the state of Connecticut. Luckily, through Matt's hard work with, with the state, that number was mitigated down. But then the council worked to also find savings to close the gap further. One of the, one of the positives of this budget, although it was really just a result of shifting funds, but was the shoring up of the fund balance by over a million dollars. We had the October storm that cost the town significantly, we're waiting for reimbursement from the federal government, but our liability from that storm is a couple million dollars and it came right out of fund balance. So that's an accomplishment to get up, to try to shore up our fund balance as we move forward to that referendum in November on the renovations of Enfield High School for the consolidated high school. As with everyone, I'm sure there's, there's positives and there's negatives to the budget. To me, my goal this budget season was to get the town to increase its general fund contribution to education by a number that showed an increased commitment. I didn't achieve that at all. There's many different ways you can relate to numbers, but the funding, the, yes, the Board of Education has an increase in funding by 430,000 dollars and it's coming from the state of Connecticut. It's coming from your other pocket. Yes, there's 627,000 dollars or more, depending on what the board saves this fiscal year, but that's good fiscal management by the previous Board of Education and the current Board of Education. I met with the superintendent, the chairman of the board and the town manager and the, the board or the school system identified an additional 363,000 dollars in savings in their proposed budget. And then our changes in IT, I think, account for about another 50,000 dollars. The additional 106, although I didn't support Councilman Hall's amendment because I wanted those proposing the amendment to then support the budget, it still delivers dollars for the school system, which I think are important, but it didn't show an additional financial contribution by the town. And that was my goal when I went into the budget and I, I didn't achieve it and, and I tried and I'm okay with it. But I think, you know, the high school, if, if the referendum passes in November, and I really hope it does because we need to do that, I, I hope people don't, don't feel that, that the board budget can just stay flat for four more years until we get a new high school, because that's when the savings come. Your 2 million dollars savings per year happens when you actually consolidate in 2017. So just be mindful about the impact across the town and the school system. We're not a growing community, we're not generating new tax dollars through growth and we're trying our best, but we've got limits. And hopefully next year, the, the grand list grows considerably and, and we have some additional revenue so that it, it isn't a direct impact on the taxpayers. We are in a revaluation year, as Deputy Mayor Nelson mentioned. More than 50% of the Houses are probably going to see a tax decrease because of this budget, but there's about 50% that are going to see a tax increase based on the shift in the revale and we know, I understand, there are folks out there like myself, that I'm going to see a couple hundred dollar reduction. And I know there's folks out there, they're going to see a couple thousand dollar increase just based on their results from revale. It took a lot of work to get back to the manager's proposed 9, .9 mil increase in, in the, in the, in the mill rate. No one likes to raise taxes, but I think the council over the last five years has worked well enough to identify the priorities for the town to continue to move, move us forward, understanding the constraints of the economy. And so it's not a great budget, as Councilman Hall mentioned, not happy with it. I'm glad the process is over so we can get on to other things. But I really encourage, you know, this council that we need to be just as diligent in our duties next time around and probably start a lot earlier and start to identify ways that we can further streamline, because if we don't have the revenue coming in on one side, our option that the state gives us is the property tax and no one likes that. And we all think it's regressive and that it needs to be changed, but we, we deal with what we're dealt and what we can do to, to raise revenue. So, you know, it's, someone said if, if, generally if you don't like it, you know, not everyone's going to like it, there's something good in it, there's something bad in it, but in the end, it might be that it's a fair budget. So I thank all of you for all your hard work. It's been since March and, and to Matt and to Dan and to all your department directors since January, thank you for, for the process that you've gone through and, and all of the, the long days and nights and weekends that you've spent putting the budget together. So again, I'll support it reluctantly, but I think at this point in time, it's the best that we could put together. Further comments? Then may we have roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Against.
Councilman Crowley.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Hall.
Pardon me?
Pardon me?
Four.
Mayor Copan.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Against.
Councilman Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Against.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
We have, oh, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor and three against. No abstentions.
Okay, next resolution is the LoCIP grant, resolved that the town council, the town of Enfield, does hereby appropriate LoCIP grant funds in the amount of 339,000 dollars for the following purpose, in accordance with the 2012, 2013 annual operating and capital budget. Town road paving, 339,000 dollars.
So moved.
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
All four.
Councilman Crowley.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Hall.
Four.
Mayor Copan.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Four.
Councilman Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Yes.
Next one has to be, yeah.
Is coming around. Next item is the resolution, re the education block grant, resolved that the town schools' budget adopted by the town council in the amount of 63,141,355 included the anticipated revenue of 28,810,492 dollars from the education block cost sharing grant on page 26 of the 2012, 2013 annual operating and capital budget.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion. Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
Councilman Crowley.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Hall.
Four.
Mayor Copan.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Four.
Councilman Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Final resolution, resolved that the tax rate of 27.84 mils be set on the grand list of October 1st, 2011 for the town of Enfield and shall be payable in two semi-annual installments, July 1st, 2012 and January 1st, 2013. Be it further resolved, however, that real estates and personal property taxes amounting to 100 dollars or less shall be paid in full on July 1st, 2012. And be it further resolved, however, that motor vehicle taxes shall be paid in full on July 1, 2012. And be it further resolved that any motor vehicle, real estate or personal property taxes in the amount of 5 dollars or less shall be waived pursuant to Connecticut State Statute, Section 12 dash 144(c).
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion. Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Which one's this four?
The mill rate.
Mill rate.
Four.
Councilman Crowley.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Hall.
Four.
Mayor Copan.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Four.
Councilman Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Against.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
We have 10 in favor, one against, no abstentions.
That completes our agenda items.
Motion to adjourn.
So a motion to adjourn by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by-
I just want to add a quick-
Go ahead, Councilman Crowley.
We got an email from the town manager's office that the governor will be here tomorrow around 3 o'clock to sign the, I believe it's the Sunday Liquor Sales Bill. It's open to the public and-
Is there a cash bar?
I don't know. Is he going to be here in the council chambers? He will be here in the council chambers, expected here around 3 o'clock. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? We are adjourned. Good night.